On to the request for to authorize expenses, Oregon Coast Economic Summit warrants, August 20 and 21. I plan on attending that. There's going to be representative there from Senator Wyatt's office, Senator Martin, and other people. It's a very important event for infrastructure, for our harbor, and other things. So, in that case, you want to attend that?
Do you want me -- there's actually one, three, four requests.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have to figure out what.
So, do you want to deal with each one separately?
One of them will.
Yeah, we just blanket it all.
You can, you absolutely can. I'm just asking. So, you have a member of the mayor plans to attend later this week in Lawrence, the Oregon Coast Economic Summit. And the estimated cost for mileage, maybe a meal not provided with the registration, and two nights lodging is $378.40. And then the mayor also plans to attend a meeting next, on September 9th, City of Yawhats. And this is the city hall meeting meeting Yawhats is sponsoring this here. So, really, the only cost for that would be mileage reimbursement estimated at $45. And the mayor also plans to attend the 89th Annual League of Oregon Cities Conference, which will be in Eugene, September 25th through 27th. And between the registration, mileage, lodging fees, and other miscellaneous, the cost for that is estimated at $1,140. And finally, there's a planning commissioner training. Again, that will be in Eugene. It will be on September 25th. And earlier this month, this was presented to our planning commission. And three of the members voiced real strong interest in attending this. So, they're asking for your authorization for the $50 per attending registration fee, mileage reimbursement, and meals. They might carpool.
I was going to say, couldn't they?
I don't know. They didn't get that far. They're just hoping that you will authorize some expenses after attending that. So, we're looking at a couple thousand dollars. Perry, the planning commission training, isn't this the same one that we've talked about having here? No, no. Matt Spangler, used to be Lincoln County Planner, now works for the LCP. He's come over to a couple planning, well, one planning commission, he's going to come to another one.
Yes.
That is, that's also training.
And we're going to be invited to that one, I understand, for a while.
Yes.
I thought we had, we're talking about a league Oregon cities training here. It's been a while ago.
Well, typically, when this training here from the Oregon City Planning, not Oregon City, but Oregon City Planning Directors Association, they will put out the flyers. And typically, they need a large area because they need a lot of response. So, for us to host a meeting like this.
I don't mean here, here on the coast.
There hasn't been one on the coast. There used to be in Newport. Now, this is the same training that our planning commissioners in the past have been, but there hasn't been a meeting, a training session on the coast for a long time.
That one has specific topics.
Yes.
What Matt's been talking to us about is one specific part of the, referring to the planning development when he comes here. But this is covering 10 issues City Attorney wants the planning commission to know, local decision making from a former hearings official and legal referee, and then a panel discussion.
Like I say, those three commissioners have voiced real interest in doing this.
Go ahead.
Did you have the hand? Oh, okay. I would like to move that we authorize all of these expenses as outlined on Perry Murray's memo of August 18th with nothing to exceed the announced outline here.
Second.
That was a model.
Yes.
Any discussion on that? Paul, please.
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
Poitier?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelot?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
On IMF, equipment purchase backup, SCABA remote control and monitoring system laptop.
Yeah, that was in the budget. This is part of the SCADA system for the water treatment plant and also the wastewater treatment plant. Both plants run on a SCADA system, which is automation of anywhere from pumps, valves, samplers, air adjustments. To the water plant, we can adjust chlorine, soda ash, all the different adjustments can be made from an outside through a portal. And the operator can actually enter the water plant and do controls from his house, which saves the city a lot over the years because we've been able to do these adjustments without having to drive there and do a call up. They can have it on their counter, you know, all night long and then adjust stuff. If there's an alarm, they can go right to it and see what the problem is. What we have currently is one computer, and there's no redundancy to it. And I put it in the budget so I could actually have this backup in my office. And being I'm the DOC for the water, I'd like to be able to watch the water plant at any given time. And this would also create a backup if something had happened to the, or would happen to the original computer, then this would be a backup for the operators. So, again, this was in the budget. It costs $6,000, $6,174, $5,000 of which is, of that prize is actually the firewall, the protection that the EPA and the state mandate. You have these for protection of dirty water. So, the firewall has to be so secure that no one could get in to enter the water plant through their computer. So, if right now it's not mandated, but in another year according to the automation group, they said that it will be mandated.
So, the last model of the plants, is that pots or is that, is that cable or is it good? What communicates to the plants?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's telephone. So, it's, yeah. We never did get in with the cable, but they can still, it's the same type of router. They can just make the transition if we decide to go with broadband. Right now, it's DHL or something like that, DHS. So, this price is pretty good. It's new tag, the automation group, and they are current SCADA contractors. They built the SCADA systems at the wastewater and the water plant. And this is part of their system, and it's full proof. They're one of the best in the state. So, they are actually, because we're only really getting it for $1,174, the laptop, with all the programming. And again, the cost is that $5,000 firewall.
That's a stupid firewall.
Yeah.
Is that a hardware?
We have staff research it and ask a lot of questions, but because it's mandated, you know, EPA firewall, that that's, that's what it is right now. It's pretty sad, but that's the price.
Do they mandate a specific type of firewall?
Uh, I don't know.
The vendor's mom gave you this firewall?
Yeah.
And it's hardware or software?
It's.
Is it like key?
I'm not sure.
Is it? Is it an hardware or?
Probably both.
Actually, there's some that are centric to hardware.
I would suspend, but it's hardware. The questions that I asked online in one of my forums were, the responses were beyond my comprehension of why we needed this, but the bottom line was that there, we have to have it.
How much is it?
It's, the total price is $6,174.
And it's in the budget?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that I brought a staff to spend $6,200 for the SCADA system with the hardware firewall.
Second.
Maybe a second of discussion? Paul, please.
Left?
Yes.
Poitier?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelot?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Daughter?
See, you've still got the question. Stack of papers over there, where we got the correspondence.
Well, I don't have any correspondence.
Really?
What's in here? I don't have any correspondence.
Brady, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have my report. So, I moved ahead with getting the water treatment plant a security camera. And one thing about this new laptop, we'll be able to utilize some of that for security along monitoring and stuff too. So, that's another plus. And the, we're going to have three cameras around the water plant. It's a DVR. We're going to have one of our guy, John, actually, our temporary guy, is, that's one of his specialties as a contractor. He installs security systems and cameras and stuff like this. So, he's going to help us in installation. If we purchase it, he'll work with Paul for installation and use his knowledge for that. So, that's going to save the city some money as far as not having to hire a low voltage contractor to come in and install. So, that's, that's a plus plus for us too. Really, the only other thing, the crews, well, we finished the park and have the walls built around the each bridge, but I hope that everybody liked that. That took quite a bit of time, and it worked out real well. The other, the other thing is the fish plant. And we're clean up to where, I really would like to invite the council at any given time with a schedule allowed, like I said earlier, to take it toward to the plant as we're, you know, making decisions on it. And it looks really good right now. So, that's, that's kind of it. We're getting into cleaning the highway. Like I mentioned, the curts are going to be painted, the cleaning up of probably one or another. We just can't, ODOT's really busy. They just can't get up here to work with us. So, about the only thing they're going to do is the crosswalks. They paint the crosswalks, and that's about it. They're going to repaint the bridge surface. But it looks like the city's on the hook for doing the diagonal striping, like I said. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with that. I've got enough to just do it. And that's kind of it. We're in the water years right now, so the crew's really, you know, going to be busy doing that within the next week or so. Tuna season's hot and heavy, so it's, you know, that's all about the tuna right now down at Harbor. So, that's about it for my report. This, the council has questions for me.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Are you just doubling up on the dummies of the carcasses that are in that curb? How are you guys going to handle that when the tuna hits hard?
Well, currently, we've got our garbage company checking daily. So, seven days a week, they come down, we drive through, they look in, and if it eats up, they dump it. There's the, and if they need one more dumpster, we can add one. We're really good, better communications than we ever have with the Northland Sanitary. So, they're working with us. Plus, our harbor crew has been on top of the smell issue, and we're still working at, trying to get the utility crew to put the catch base in under the dumpsters, but they're just busy with trying to get the fish plant completed in the sewer line there. So, it's on their schedule. As soon as the meters are done, it's our next big project.
As long as the, the, Northland Sanitary is, pick up the dumpster at the harbor before it makes its rounds and backs into the channel house to pick up the dumpsters. That was bad.
Was that, yeah. Oh, you mean the, from the odor.
Oh, yeah. And the goo that was left.
Oh, yeah. The odor and the grease bad.
I think they, I think they got that down.
So, I guess the only other thing I have is, I'm going to proceed with, we're installing a giant culvert there, check dam at the water treatment plant in our raw reservoir. That's about 16,000 miles behind the water treatment plant. There's a big three acre raw lake up there. And the dam itself's in pretty good condition. We need to address the dock area next summer. But the check dam in the back is, the pipe is rotted away. It's a four foot culvert. It's about 30 feet long, and we're replacing it with a five foot ADS plastic culvert with smooth walls inside so the beavers can't get, they're good engineers, and they're taking the old steel culvert with the ribs, and they get pieces of wood and branches and debris in there, and we cannot get that out. And so, we end up using tobacco, and it gets tore up. So, over the years, it's just, it's not even culvert anymore. It's just pieces, and we need to get that fixed because if there's another little landslide during the rainy season, it needs to carry the material. So, I'm going to use Dan Price, probably take him a day to replace that. And again, I'll probably utilize Grant Snyder to do the hauling of the rocking material, and then utilize Dan Price to do, with his big excavator, install the culvert. With the city crew's help, as the ditch guys manpower in the dam with the excavator, I think we can pull off it one day. So, let's just kind of, just keeping you guys on board with what I'm doing. And then right after that project, we're going to tear the lead tube down and get it just all removed. We could do that today also, get it in a box, wooden debris box from Northland Sanitary. And Dan Price said he could get that down and clean it up in one day. So, those two projects are probably going to be happening the first, first week of September, the eighth also. And that's it for my report.
Good. Council comments? Oh, I thought you had.
I gave you all, no correspondence, I gave you all a written staff report at the end, you know, if you have any questions on any of that. But the very last item, Kathy Wyatt, who's from the advertising department of the News Times newspaper, and she's inquiring if the city is interested in placing an ad in the News Times salmon bait page where they cover the staff. And she says that the ads will be in full color, and here's it's black and white because I forgot to color it black, but it really is in color. Anyway, it says that the least dollar ad for the city would be $93, and the most expensive is $186. So, she was going to be here tonight, but apparently she wasn't able to make it. So, she's just wondering if the council would like to do that.
Is the city doing that in the past?
No, the chamber does.
Has the chamber been doing that in the past?
Probably. Chamber respectfully decline for choosing?
Certainly, yeah, yeah. You sell the advertising space. And the only other thing, earlier in the meeting, the Jip crane. Do you want to do a motion tonight to authorize Brady because of the dollar?
I thought we did.
Well, you made a motion, and then you withdrew it.
Yeah.
And said you talked about it later in the meeting.
Yes, so.
So, we're going to move it.
Yeah, okay. So, the bar room, I thought we had this.
Yeah, but we're still going to talk with Mr. Wolf.
Yes. So, the motion was inserting staff, Brady, to move ahead with US crane to get the work done at fish plant, not to exceed $20,000 with, now the caveat that he'll speak with this.
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Poitier?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelot?
Yes.
Dambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Daughter?
Yes.
Thank you.
I got a concern, Mayor. I got a concern. Real quick, with the planning commission, what's the status of the piece of property on all, all the?
That one?
No, 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 all C and Sunset. The guys out on the north side.
The guy with the.
Oh, I worked on that. I worked on that.
Oh, you worked on that?
Yes.
What's the status of that?
I just got ahold of the gentleman. He was in Texas when the contractor put that in, and he said that if he was there, he would have made sure it was inside the property bounds, and that when he gets back here, he's going to meet with me, myself, and Larry Lewis, and set up a meeting up there, and we're going to talk to him about, I have the overlay in the aerial of where the property pins are, and he's either going to do a survey, get it updated, or go by the one that was in the nineties that we have. And he's going to work, he may want to write a letter to the council, or he's just going to fix it and have it redone so it's inside his property bounds. But I guess we'll know more when he gets here, we have a meeting.
When is he coming?
Supposedly the first week of September, so that's, yeah.
So, unless he's going to be nice about it.
He is. He was, yeah. He kind of wrote a response that was kind of, kind of smarky a little bit at first, but once I talked to him on the telephone, he was very courteous.
That's a lot of work it's going to do.
Yeah. Right. That's what we're asking.
Okay, any other comment?
I have a question. What are they having that video we get? Oh, well, let's see. We were just recently talking about, it's on the city's website. It's on the city's website. And I believe the committee was going to bring back a recommendation for, like, should be like DVD, should be DVD's made, they can sell, and so much.
But I, but we talked about giving those in the chamber so there could be copies available for any chamber members who are interested. What we hadn't figured out, what we hadn't figured out was who was going to pay for the first 50 copies? You know, what the city was going to pay, we don't have a price, and we didn't have a chance to. I would kind of like to see it released to the chamber and allow the chamber to make copies for chamber members and get it out there. And hopefully we can do something with it.
Somebody posted YouTube, they should talk about that.
No, I was, not, I don't think anybody has, but I was just saying, too, could we give copy to the chamber so they can put it on their website too? So, you know, when people go, you know, we should put the, like I said, somebody puts it on YouTube, it's kind of, I hurt the city head off.
Does the council have to make a, does the council have to make a motion, or can you just give the copy to the chamber?
Oh, well, you know, motion's always clear. And I know, when you say give a copy, you mean just give a DVD copy, then the chamber uses it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I made a motion that we give a DVD copy to the chamber so they can use it as well to help advertise the city, you know, to do it.
Make as many copies as possible.
Make as many copies, put it on their website, you know.
Distribute.
Distribute whatever they deem great for the city and, you know.
Second.
I just had to ask Anna to confirm, but it is on YouTube. Howard did that. Or you did that.
I said that. I have it on our.
Okay, so it is on YouTube.
So, YouTube, that is on the city's website?
Yeah, we have, we just have it embedded on our website. I learned when we got our, you know, I left service, and I'm not posting any of that stuff on our site anymore. So, it's actually on YouTube, and then Howard has it on his website as well.
So, how, how do you get from the city's website?
You can just click on it. It's embedded.
Oh, okay, it's embedded.
And it plays on YouTube.
Yeah, the video's not actually on the website.
Right, just the code.
Right, it's on the website. Okay.
Hey, this FYI.
I don't know a lot about this technology, perhaps. Brent can put, give us some input on this. But I recall Mr. Shibby talking about mass reproduction from the master, and that it was actually very, very inexpensive. Came out for Toledo's, I think it was 88 cents a copy with a fancy shrink wrap. If we produce it in-house on even good equipment than we got, I don't think it's going to stand the test of time and quality that professionally done. I got to assume Shibby's, Shibby get out and having it professionally done on elaborate equipment.
Well, you know, the issue is, does the city want to pursue that, or do we turn it over to the chamber and leave it to the chamber to pursue it?
Right.
Which I think makes more sense. That's actually what I was considering, I'd have to run this through the chamber.
I was talking about selecting that laptop.
No, no, I get the idea is. Kind of never, they're released on copies like that for businesses that just want to get it on there and run it from a live up. But, yeah, I've talked to Howard about that a long time ago. He did. Yeah. And Howard's very interested in moving forward with a whole set of videos that specialize, you know. But that's on him.
I have one more thing. We have, we have a very valuable employee named John. And knowing full well this is how John made his living, was installing video and audio equipment. I kind of think it's a little unfair to expect him to do what he made a living doing for a little while.
Oh, for, oh, helping installing the camera and stuff like, yeah. Well, he was just actually, he said he volunteered his knowledge, not really, or to say doing the work, but kind of helping Paul install it and notice that, but yeah, you're right, it's not fair because that's, but he wants to volunteer his time. He was willing to do it even when he was off. And I said, no, we'll do it when you're on, but we'll have to shuttle the work in the water plant rather than the harbor. And I don't know how, that's why I was getting very far out.
His time, yeah, his time would have to be allocated to the water plant for that fear of it.
Let's find out.
Well, that's our internal, that's our internal, we'll keep it.
That's right.
Durin just talked about something else. I am.
Let's find out what his expertise is, and then I'll go revisit.
His expertise is audio visual.
Well, you possibly suggest that we get him outside the box for this installation?
I'm just throwing this out here to say that it seems a little useless.
Well, let's find out what his value is before we visit.
Because there's all, maybe the option, like, he's a licensed contractor.
Is he a licensed contractor?
Yeah. That's what he, that's what he does on the spare time. He's working for the city because he's just trying to get the knowledge of doing public works and seeing if that's maybe a career he might want to go after, and because of the benefits and things like that. The pay's not all there, but the benefits make up the difference.
Not as a temporary employee?
Well, no, but, you know.
Well, he was just.
Do you want to call the question on the motion? Do you wanna call the question on the motion? The motion was to give a, the promotional video, a copy to a Chamber of Commerce that I just wrote, can use that as well.
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Goddard?
Yes.
Lev?
Yes.
Boiki?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, in my previous one, more shot. Speaking of the planning commission, what's going on here?
The hearing has continued to the next meeting and the record is still open. We missed you. When is the next meeting?
September. September.
The second one is in September.
You said end of September?
We had a small turnout.
For the first one?
Yes, there was a complaint that it was not, the notices were not noticeable enough. That one in the post office got torn down too soon and too many people weren't aware of it.
There's no good argument about that, you know? I know the city faces that, the fire district faces that. Whenever anything that is the least controversial comes up, everybody complains that they didn't get adequate notice. But everybody always, the, the same notice goes out all the time by legal requirement. So that's, there's no way to deal with that except to say, mm.
It's moving along, but please come and pay attention. I know.
All right, we have any more?
Sorry. Perry is kinda directed toward you because I need some guidance, but I don't know if everybody looked at their latest August global focus from legal organizations. On page 15, it talks about CIS is offering a discount if we all, well, in the future they're going to have a seminar on video for elected officials liability training. And then we would actually get a discount on our premium up to $1,000. Has this happened before?
This is a new, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad you read that. It's, it's a fairly new program with CIS and I call it their bonus program. We benefited from this program before in that we went through the process of working on updating our employee handbook. We got a 1% discount for, on our premium. So it's a bonus program and they offer it for all kinds of things. And you're right, training for the governing body, you can get a discount. Typically, the discount available is like 1% of your annual premium or, or it's limited to a maximum. So if that's something you'd be interested in, let me know.
It's gonna be available September, supposedly September this year. It's just a 15 minute video that we'll probably have a mail-in copy of and you can watch it.
If that's something you're interested in, I'll definitely book up a...
Yeah.
We'd benefit if I was able to possibly get a discount.
Excellent.
Great. Yes, sir.
With that notice though too, could we, I don't know, could we run it during a public meeting and could we, but I know there's people that are up and coming running, let them know, let, let them know that we're having this too, because up and coming people that are going to be elected should agree on the agenda, you know? Could we put it on the agenda though?
Actually, that's a really good idea because people who haven't served in public office often do not understand all the legal requirements, limitations, risks, whatever.
Like put it on the agenda?
On the job train.
Yeah.
I'll definitely follow up on that, I'll, I'll let you know.
Here, I'll make you an offer. I'll make you an offer you can't refuse. Through the last almost 10 years, every couple of years, Betty Tonan and I do the candidate night at Spelling Hall and we are going to be doing it. Everybody who's running will get a letter of invitation from me, probably right after Labor Day. I would be willing to put a little note, you know, in a piece of paper in those envelopes saying, by the way, the Dubeve City Council will be running this video at next date and time if we know by then. We may not know by then.
May not.
But if we know by then, I would be happy to do that if the council has any interest in that. You don't have to decide now because we don't know if we're gonna have it or not, so.
Okay, any other calls? My sign is 907, is there?